Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the October 20th City Council meeting of the City of Fortuna.
Can you check, see if your devices are muted?
We'll, we'll work through the audio. If you'll silence your electronic devices and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can mute your device.
Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Conley?
Present.
Councilmember Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Protam Trent?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Thank you. And with that, our first item of business this evening is oral comments from the public. If you have any comments for anything that is not on the agenda tonight, this is the time. If you just state your name and...
My name is Charles Wilson. We've been protesting at the courthouse corner for about five years now. We've never been in the newspaper. The Time Standard had a one-time protest against Trump in the headlines today. Media doesn't like Trump and their purpose is to control public opinion, not report it. At the beginning of the COVID nonsense, the government COVID nonsense times, we would get 15 to 20 honks, rocks, a lot of fingers, and screaming. But after the death data started leaking out, we were getting 600 to 700 honks in two hours. Motorists probably can't read our signs since they're driving by so fast. But they'd like to see a human waving at them. We like to make them happy. Motorists don't honk at a billboard. I have a sign that currently says, that I currently carry. My sign says, "No number 50. Motor, government is our servant, not our master." The politicians in the states of California and Texas are our nation's leaders. They both think alike. They both show the proper way to control us people. California, however, is making a big mistake with the special election that's costing us taxpayers 290 million. That's almost a third of a billion dollars. It doesn't matter that California has a $20 billion deficit this year. But we have an innovative group of high-paid legislators and they know how to manipulate us in the direction they demand. They have lots and lots of tax money, but it shouldn't be wasted like Democrat Governor Grusom is doing. My suggestion is that instead of wasting so much of our tax money on this stupid election game, we should have just passed a law giving Texas Democrats a third of a billion dollars to fight their state's politicians' trick to rig their election. California has three political parties. The unaffiliated party is the fastest growing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Justin Premafori, Fortuna Police Employees Association President, here to give my report on the overtime hours worked by our members in the last pay period. So from October 5th to October 18th, we worked another 351.75 hours of overtime, bringing our grand total from June 29th of this year to 3,314.75 hours. That's over a 16-week period. So it's 207 hours per week or 414 hours per pay period. Also, what's missing from this is thankfully, our lieutenant covered graveyard shift, which saved an additional roughly 50 hours of overtime that was going to be worked by somebody. So the association would like to thank him for that. Again, as I stated in the last meeting, this isn't a recruitment issue. It's a retention issue. We need to figure out how we're going to plug the leaks and keep people from leaving. I know, you know, the big answer is money and I understand the city's position, but we're going to have to do something. There's also things that the organization can do as well to help. And we all need to work together. And I'd like to thank Mayor Johnson for meeting with me and having a one-on-one discussion about it. I hope to continue to talk to you guys. I'm always available. I'm working day shift now, so don't hesitate to text me. I work normal hours. But again, I will get up here every meeting and, and give you guys the numbers. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and we come to the consent calendar. And there are the City Council minutes, administrative monthly report, community development monthly report, finance, parks recreation, police department, public works monthly reports, a report of disbursements, authorization for staff to send a letter of support for the Humboldt County Association of Governments' proposed regional housing needs allocation, and authorize staff to negotiate professional services contract. Anybody like to pull anything?
F.
Okay. Any other? Is there any public comment before Mayor Protam Trent? Okay.
I haven't read this authorization to the HCOG, but I know that they have a lot of different regulations that they have there. The state government's got a, this idea that they essentially want to confiscate all the private property by little bits at a time. Now, one of the recent proposals they had was AB 1157, which said that they could, you, the maximum you could raise your rent would be 2% per year plus a maximum of 3% inflation. Now, if you have a, an additional unit, you know, it's mother-in-law unit type thing, generally you don't have a separate meter. And, you know, it costs money to have this kind of stuff. Okay, so you, if you have your, your rent set at a certain point, you can only raise that a certain amount anyway. But the utilities which are not in, which are included in your rent are rising faster than 5%. So I just wanted to point out that if the AB 1157 or anything similar to it is resurrected, you're just going to essentially, over time, eventually confiscate all the rental property and people won't want to rent, just like we don't want to rent. After we've gone through all these people that break the windows and all that kind of stuff and you can't do anything and you can't, the court essentially collapses and won't even evict somebody that's not a COVID or anything like that. They're just a, a guest. And you can't evict them except, it takes a year to evict them. So anyway, I just, that's my comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And this is a short answer. This is for private development with contractors and a lot developers building homes in Humboldt County. It's not a, it's not a state item per se. Okay, so you were gonna...
Mm-hmm. I would like to ask Chief to talk a little bit about the, the senior center tour to the police facility.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Yeah, based off of our conversation regarding the, the staff report, I, I did share with the Mayor Protam that we got a thank you card from the Fortuna Senior Center. And the reason this is unique is we just got done hearing all the hours that our officers are working. And Sergeant Charlton went above and beyond. We had a large group of seniors. He took a very significant chunk of his time to give them a very in-depth tour, extend that courtesy. And I see that not only with Sergeant Charlton, but I see it with the other employees at the police department, even though they've got a lot going on and we are working hard. I'm just very pleased with their performance and their community engagement and their willingness to do that. So I just felt that I wanted to say thank you to the Fortuna seniors for acknowledging his efforts.
Thank you. I also want to say thank you to the, the officers, the sergeants, you, everybody going above and beyond. I know it's very taxing on you and on your families, but we're trying to find a solution.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Yes, we are. And, okay.
Make a motion to approve the consent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. And our first item of business tonight is a second reading and adoption of ordinance 2025-777.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So the first reading of this ordinance took place on October 6th. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. But the city's current purchasing regulations, which were last revised in 1997, are contained in Chapter 2.5 of the Fortuna Municipal Code. And so staff contracted with Claire Gibson, who specializes in contract and procurement law. And she identified portions of the city's purchasing regulation that better align with existing laws as applicable to charter cities. And so the attached ordinance provides those changes for the city council to review. I went through those in depth. At the last council meeting, I'm happy to do that again if you would like me to. But for now, I'll turn it back to the mayor for any questions or...
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No.
Okay. Well, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion. Oh, public comment first. Pardon me. If there's any public comment on this item pertaining to the purchasing policy and the ordinance. Okay, there are none.
I'll make a motion to conduct the second reading and adopt ordinance number 2025-777 and read by title only.
Second.
Ordinance 2025-777, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, California, amending Title II Administrative and Personnel of the City of Fortuna Municipal Code by revising Chapter 2.50, purchase of supplies, equipment, and contractual services, and determining the ordinance exempt from SEQA. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And our next item is a public hearing for unmet transit needs. Staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. The unmet transit needs public hearing is prompted by the Humboldt County Association of Governments, or also known as HCOG, who encourages its local transportation agencies to hold public hearings in order to receive and consider public input regarding that jurisdiction's transportation services or lack of. Findings are evaluated by the HCOG's Social Services Transportation Advisory Council Findings are evaluated by the HCOG's Social Services Transportation Advisory Council, or SS-TAC, and considered for funding if they meet qualifying criteria as outlined in HCOG's attached synopsis. So you can see my staff reports, and staff recommendations are to review any questions with a council, excuse me, with staff, open public hearing, closed public hearing, and then make a motion to forward the council meeting recording link to HCOG for review.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from council? Okay, well, we'll open the public hearing, and part of this process is if there is any transit needs that you want to bring up at this time, this is the opportunity to do
My name is Charles Wilson. I've been commenting on the transit needs the last 50 years in Humboldt County. I got the bridge over Redwood Creek so they could have pedestrians in 1982. Now, Caltrans has a policy in Humboldt County of prohibiting pedestrians to use the state highway to go between communities. Now Humboldt County is like a street of pearls, you got, there's only one way to go between communities in Humboldt County, and that's the state highway. So what the county, Caltrans, does is they put up signs saying to protect their liability, only in Humboldt County. They don't do this in Del Norte County or Mendocino County, only in Humboldt County. Pedestrians prohibited. Now, the thing is, I, back in April 1992, I wanted to walk, I brought my car up here, I wanted to walk from, I got flew in, and I wanted to walk up to the airport. I was down in Arcata, okay? There is no legal way for me to walk to, from Arcata to the airport. I protested HCOG meeting, there's seven meeting, seven people there at that time, because they didn't realize all this money that's being passed out. But anyway, the Assistant District Engineer for Caltrans gets up there, essentially like Khrushchev with his, with his shoe. I don't want any hitchhikers on my highway. Now, it's not his highway, and I'm not a hitchhiker, I'm just a pedestrian. For 34 years down in LA City, I walked, I took my car five times, I got shot out three times, got attacked my dog six times, saw three people get hit in the crosswalk, so I'm not a hitchhiker. But anyway, so the thing is, Caltrans has this policy of prohibiting pedestrians on highways, so you can't walk to Riodell. They got the pedestrian walkway over the bridge, but you can't use it because it's got the sign. Of course, you can do it if you don't want to mind being hassled by the sheriff or the Highway Patrol. Now, another thing is for the motorists going up here on Caltrans northbound, why do they have this sign saying, move over to the left? Is that because they won't fix up the northbound, the southbound, or northbound off-ramp, so that they don't have a pedestrian, or don't have a, some sort of conflict there? But anyway, that's my comments on the thing there. I've commented on these things for the last 30 years, but they never pay any attention, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments on the transit needs? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion?
I make a motion to forward this council meeting recording link to HCOG for public comment review.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. So, thank you. And now, we will move to approve reallocating three part-time park maintenance workers for one full-time park maintenance two position. Staff report?
Hello again, Honorable Mayor and Council. Since January, the city has spent almost $11,000 on pre-employment, medical exams, and backgrounds on eight different candidates who were selected from several interviews for the park maintenance worker position, excuse me, it's part-time, to clarify. This cost does not include the staff time that takes to prepare for an interview through HR, interviews consisting of a three-person panel, examine, excuse me, scheduling the exam itself, et cetera. So staff has determined that the park maintenance worker one recruitment is generally unsuccessful and costly due to the low wages and lack of benefits that do not attract or retain employees. Staff is confident that a full-time position would be more attractive to qualified candidates. So staff is recommending that there be a motion to approve the reallocation of three part-time park maintenance worker positions to one full-time park maintenance worker two position.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for staff on this? Well, I will make a comment that I like the savings part of that, it's a start, right? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the reallocation of three part-time park maintenance worker one positions to one full-time park maintenance worker two position.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. And now we come to amend the city's annual fee schedule for fiscal year 2526 for use of River Lodge.
Thank you, it's me again. So with recent conversation regarding the revenue generation ad hoc in River Lodge, staff has met several times to find ways to generate revenue. Staff has already implemented some of the operational changes that should reduce the cost of staff time and/or increase revenue if enforced. Additionally, staff has developed a revised fee schedule, that is before you, which should narrow the gap between River Lodge and competitors' rental costs in comparison. With the revised fee schedule and enforced operational changes listed in the staff report, it's projected that the River Lodge's regular operating cost deficit would decrease from approximately $275,000 per year to approximately $200,000. And we came up with that number using a report of River Lodge's rentals just since January as a base, and then applied the proposed fee differences to come up to approximately $75,000 in increased revenue from what we actually did. I'd also like to clarify in my staff report that if there is any confusion, the River Lodge does host public events as well as private events. And I'd also like to clarify that on the fee schedule, the wedding package has been relabeled to a wedding event, and it should remain a wedding event throughout the fee schedule. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I recommend a motion to adopt the resolution 202525 and read by title only.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there any questions for staff on this item? Well, I have one, I've gotten some questions. For people that already have events reserved and deposits down, how will the, will there be any effect to their rental rates?
Whatever rate was in place when they put their deposit down, it should be honored.
Okay, thank you.
And forgive me, Mayor, I did also completely forget a small presentation that I made. And so if you'll allow me real quick to just run through that, I'm going to share my screen.
Absolutely, yes.
There we go. Okay, so River Lodge and Monday Club fee schedule. So some of the proposed fee changes are highlighted in the staff report, but I'll just show them again for our viewers. So we're suggesting to increase rental fees, increase the standard cleaning and security deposits, add a table chair setup fee, add rescheduled processing fee, a dishware use fee, increase the audiovisual daily fee, and replace the entire facility rental with a combined Chinook, Steelhead, and Coho rental, which are the three main rooms of the building. This allows the smaller rooms to be rented out to other users if possible. I won't go through each individual comparison, you can see a full comparison attached to the staff report, but we are proposing that we increase the deposit from 250 to 500, the Coho room full day from 460 to 500, Steelhead 660 to 700, Chinook 1,020 to 1,300, and then the combined from 1530 to 2,000. You can see the comparisons to the right with the closest square footage equivalent we could find. These are the half-day rate comparisons, so again, Coho from 255 to 300, Steelhead 360 to 550, Chinook 535 to 850, and then the new fee of the half-day for what was previously known as the entire facility, but is now just the combined main rooms of 1,000. Some other highlighted changes are the table and chair setup. We did not currently have a fee for that, we are proposing 150 per room. Actually, forgive me, that's actually an error, it's 100 per room. And then you can see that a lot of competitors actually charge 50, 60, and then some don't charge at all. However, we're trying to recoup some staff time. Audio and visual, we currently have a $30 per room daily fee, we're proposing to increase it slightly, especially because the next item on your agenda will address a much-needed upgrade of the audiovisual system. We did, are proposing the use of dishware fee. Previously, it was included with a kitchen fee, however, repeatedly, user groups were not leaving the dishes in a usable condition after their rental, and so we're hoping that this will recoup again staff time if we need to recover some of the dishes. Previously, our coffee, tea, and water service was just cost, and we're proposing to increase that to 150 for hourly service, just to maintain the area for a group of 25. Some other operational changes that are already in progress is reducing staff involvement with event prep and cleanup, enforce cleaning deposit refund requirements, adhere to a 12-hour rental, or charge extra for the additional hours. Events should end no later than 11:00 PM, and this is greatly due to the cleanup that takes place afterwards by staff. Consider transitioning from fixed office hours to event-driven staffing model. Work to increase events overall, and then we're also working to improve our marketing. So River Lodge staff is working hard at increasing social media presence, updating brochures, making sure that the venue search engines and websites are up to date, collaborating with the chamber, and increasing networking. So in conclusion, on the rental patterns for the last year or from January, and if the proposed fees and operational changes had been in place since January, it's estimated that the River Lodge would have generated approximately $75,000 more in revenue. So, side note from that, the Monday Club is also on this fee schedule, and there was an administrative oversight where Monday Club's cancellation fee did not get increased to 50 alongside all the other Parks and Rec building facilities, excuse me, rentals, and so we're just throwing this in there, hoping to make the cancellation fee $50 across the board for all of the Parks and Recreation rentals. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. This prompt any questions with the presentations? And any public comment on this item? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-25 and read by title only.
Aye, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Resolution 2025-25, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, establishing a schedule of fees and charges for Parks and Recreation and River Lodge within the City of Fortuna for fiscal year 202526. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. And thank you. So this brings us to approve a supplemental budget request for River Lodge audiovisual system, and to our presenter in the hot seat this evening, Ms. Stingbrook.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. The River Lodge audiovisual is becoming less and less reliable due to lack of maintenance. In 2017, the current audiovisual system was installed by Tech Home Innovations. For unknown reasons, the River Lodge management, management at the time, which is not current management, did not have the equipment maintained by the technician, and now the system is so far behind on updates that most components need to be replaced. This upgrade is quoted at approximately $78,000. In addition, once upgraded, the regular quarterly maintenance will need to be performed for approximately $2,400 per year. This does not include any discoveries during the maintenance that may need further attention by the technician. Humboldt Lodging Alliance has approved a contribution of $25,000 towards this project, and staff recommendation is to make a motion to approve the supplemental budget request for $80,400 in total for the purchase of audiovisual equipment at the River Lodge and ongoing maintenance. I'd also like to note that in my staff report, I made an administrative error that says open public hearing, that should be open public comment.
Okay, is there any questions from...
Yeah, I'm curious, what, so the problem is primarily software-based, or like physical, like the speakers and wires and mixers and all that are burned out?
My understanding is that the technician can reuse a lot of what's already in there as far as speakers go, I don't believe he has a plan to remove or replace any of those. It had more to do with the transmitter and receiver, I believe, it's itemized in the quote that's attached.
And were there cheaper alternatives? That, maybe a $25,000 price tag?
So after several meetings with staff, it was decided to move forward with this technician as he's already familiar, and built it essentially ground up. I've also been under the impression that the only, he is the only local person, so if we were to go outside of the area, it may actually be a lot more expensive, and they would have to start from the ground up. So if that's something that you like, we can certainly pursue that. Just with his familiarity with the River Lodge and the installation, we felt like it was sole source appropriate.
And what are the problems that are currently happening? Like it stops working, or...
So there's been several complaints that mid-event, the microphones disconnect, and there's been several events where management or staff then have to jump in and try to remedy in the moment. So connectivity.
Yeah. Perhaps Jennifer Mikey would want to address that?
Yes, so the, the problem seems to be the connection between the microphones and the transmitter that we have in the closet that's part of the system itself. And it's, he reported, meaning Ivan from Tech Home, reported that it clearly seems to be that just the age of the system itself, and without upkeep and updates, this is what's happened.
Thank you. Is there any other questions, or from council?
So the ongoing maintenance will prevent this from happening again.
Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, we don't see any. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a supplemental budget request for $80,400 for the purchase of AV equipment at River Lodge and ongoing maintenance.
Aye, second.
So we have a motion and a second, it's a voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And, thank you. Okay, and that... Okay, and that brings us to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I have met with community development and public work staff to begin work on coordinating development projects, as well as update and improve upon the city's permitting software and overall development process. City staff will be reaching out to council members and developers to better understand potential improvements to the development process. On Monday, October 13th, I attended the Public Works and Park Staff Meeting to share information on the city's financial status and/or situation, and the upcoming sales tax ballot measure that would potentially happen in November 2026. I also attended the Tourism and Marketing Meeting on October 14th. A code compliance meeting also took place between myself, community development, and the police department regarding the process of demolishing an unpermitted structure on Mill Street. The city has a judgment allowing the demolition of the structure, along with an order allowing the cost to be secured against the property. So city staff continue to work with the city attorney on the process, and more will come forward on that. I attended Talk Shop on Friday, October 17th. Work continues on the nitrous oxide ordinance, and I hope to have that to your city council in November. Work also continues on a permanent mobile home rent stabilization ordinance that is more likely to show up in early 2026. Solid Waste franchise agreement negotiations continue, and I will be bringing a contract extension for recology to the council by the end of the year. As you will recall, the franchise agreement expires at the end of this calendar year, and we're not completely done with the new franchise agreement, and so we'll need to do an extension to continue solid waste services. City staff also met with Cosmott, who is our consultant on the Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District. And you may recall, Cosmott was working on the fiscal impacts of creating an EFIT for both the city and the county of Humboldt. EFIT allows cities and counties to set aside a percentage of property tax growth for infrastructure projects. We now have the fiscal analysis, and it appears that both the city and county would still remain in the black if either a 35% or 50% share of property tax were allocated to an EFIT. So city staff have reached out to the county to review the fiscal analysis with them, and I will again keep your city council apprised of those conversations. And over the last several weeks, I continue to meet with department heads on a number of things, such as the River Lodge. And that concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for city manager?
Did you mention on the recruiting efforts for the Community Development Director at the beginning, or did I zone out for a second?
Well, there are no recruitment efforts for the Community Development Director because the Community Development Director is on FMLA.
Yep, sorry.
FMLA.
Okay, no questions. Well, then we will go into future agenda items. Anybody have anything for future agenda item? Okay, well, city council reports, and councilmember Conley?
Thank you. The Parks and Rec Commission meeting was canceled due to lack of quorum, so we did not have that meeting. And I just wanted to say how much that I appreciate the police department coming and talking about these numbers at these meetings. We as council members want to do as much as we possibly can on that issue, but right now, it's, it's not as easy as that, and it's going to be a funding issue. The city needs to figure out either how to bring more money in and/or pass a measure to help that initiative. It's going to come to the point where we're going to have less police services on the street because we won't have the people to support it. So I really encourage the people of Fortuna to really think about what they want, especially if the tax measure comes onto the thing, just to make sure that we need to keep our police officers. And really, the only way they do that, like as Justin said, is money. So when you see that, think of how many police officers you want on the street, whether you want three or four, or you want one or two. So I just encourage people to think of that.
Okay, timely. So councilmember Diaz?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Stevens?
Nothing from my end on this, this time.
Okay. Mayor Protam Trent?
I have nothing to report.
Well, I did have a HCOG meeting last week, and we got a presentation on Measure O and a presentation on the new hydrogen bus and its performance abilities. It's able to go up and down to Redway, I mean, to Willow Creek, and it can also run all day in the metropolitan Redwood Transit area, which is basically Garberville to Trinidad corridor. And it's a pretty nice-looking unit, and they will be establishing a fueling station for it on, so it will be all self-contained. Also, we worked on the regional transportation infrastructure plan, RTIP, as well as the, can't remember the exact acronym because there's a million of them, but it has to do with the regional plan as well as the infrastructure plan within HCOG. And it sets the plan for the future and the funding and what the state infrastructure project funding will cover, the STIP program. And the City of Fortuna had a little bit of that. There were some other areas, but we got some more planning and programming money for the Kenmar, and was glad to see that. So it was a good meeting, and that's pretty much all I have to report at this time. I did have a chance to sit down and talk with Justin Prima-Fiori about police and staffing and some different ideas, some different programs, some of its development from within and looking for a retention in that area, opportunities for advancement, so to speak. So some things happening on that end, but that's all I have at this time.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.